Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's six thirty-two P. M. The city of Gladstone, Oregon is situated on the traditional lands of the Clackamas, Chinook, and Kalapooia tribes. The rich history, culture, and contributions of these indigenous peoples who stewarded this land for thousands of years is worthy of acknowledgement and appreciation. I am grateful for the opportunity to live, work, and gather on these ancestral lands, and to commit to learning from the wisdom and resilience of the indigenous communities that continue to shape the region. Moving forward, I want us all to strive to build relationships based on mutual respect, understanding, and collaboration with one another and with the indigenous peoples of this land, to work together to protect and preserve the natural beauty and resources of this area, and to ensure a sustainable and harmonious future for all who call Gladstone home. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill two-five-sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means, and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually, using the Zoom platform. The Zoom platform instructions were printed on the agenda to the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, you are to have emailed your comments or your request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals intending in person may submit a speaker card located on the tables at the entrance to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the main agenda of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City events announcements during the meeting, and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, the instructions are the same. Comments are limited, again, to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Let's stand for the flag salute, please. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrator Betts, are there any additions or corrections to our agenda tonight?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We will have a brief presentation in a few minutes, and then we will move on to our consent agenda, which includes approval of our April ninth regular minutes, approval of the March bank balances, budget report for the period ending March thirty-first, approval of the March check register, legal costs for the month of March, and department head monthly reports for the month of April. Then we will move on to our Clackamas Fire District update, a presentation on the state of our Water Environmental Services District, and Gladstone City event announcements. But before we get to that, we have a presentation to make. You'll notice when we did the roll call tonight, we had six members of the city council. The seventh, our former member Veronica Reichel, is here with us tonight, and we would like to make a presentation to Veronica. Can you come forward, please?
You do. I will, so.
Veronica was elected to the council with, along with three of us up here, back in November of two thousand and twenty-two. She served capably on our council for the year of two thousand and twenty-three and up until the end of April of this year. Unfortunately, circumstances have changed with her living situation. She is now going to be living outside the city of Gladstone, and according to our city charter, can no longer serve as a city councillor. So she reluctantly submitted her resignation. I know she enjoyed the work, and we enjoyed having Veronica on the council and all that she contributed as our liaison to the Parks Board, and as someone who has lived in this city long enough to care about the issues, to contribute effectively to good discussions of the issues that are before this council. And so I am grateful that she is here and for her service to the city council. And we have a plaque to present to you. And I'm wearing shorts tonight, so I'm going to ask you to step forward, so I don't have to come out from behind. But it reads.
I suppose I can accommodate since you're accommodating.
Gladstone, Oregon. The city of Gladstone expresses their sincere appreciation to Veronica Reichel for outstanding service to the Gladstone community as a member of the Gladstone City Council, January two thousand and twenty-three to April two thousand and twenty-four. We also have your picture, your professional picture from. And we will give you the box to take things home.
Thank you, you guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Veronica. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any, any, do any councillors desire to move an item off the consent agenda, or if not, I can entertain a motion to approve it as submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The consent agenda is approved as submitted. Do we have any correspondence tonight, Administrator Betts?
We do not.
All right. We move on then to item seven, the report from our Clackamas Fire District.
Good evening. I am Assistant Fire Chief Brian Stewart. And as all of you are aware with the early morning text that you have provided, we did have a fire this morning in Gladstone. They've been very busy today, so we do not have representation at our meeting tonight. However, in your packet, you have the report for April. You can see the training and the calls that they have been working on. And also included is their quarterly newsletter, which is called The Siren. So you have both of those information in your packet. On June sixth, we will have our next joint oversight committee meeting with Counselor Garlington and Counselor Alexander, and I will be meeting with two members of their board, Fire Chief Nick Brown and Assistant Fire Chief Brian Stewart. I'd just like to say that, and I said this earlier this morning, their response times have been excellent in Gladstone, and we are so fortunate to have their service with us.
All right. Thank you for that update. And you'll notice in the Fire Chiefs' report that's in our packet, they did mention that Clackamas Fire District responded as mutually to the commercial fire at Timberline Lodge. Most of you read about that. So the scope of their responsibilities heads far beyond this immediate area. And so we're grateful that they really saved a lot of that historical site. And we're grateful that we have had them on hand here, too, locally, for the occasional fire that we get in Gladstone. All right. Next on our agenda. Greg Geist is the Director of Water Environmental Services of Clackamas County, and he has a presentation to make. Greg, if you will push, oh, there we go. All right. So that is on for you. You know the routine with the buttons and the presentation, and we have a copy of it here, but it will appear on the screen as well.
All right.
Welcome. As they prepare that, thank you, first of all, for letting me come tonight.
And I think this is our fourth, or maybe even fifth, annual report that we have brought to all the cities that we serve. We're very happy to be able to do that. I will say that typically I rely, you don't see any paper in front of me tonight. That's unusual. I rely heavily on my notes. And when I came through security, I was horrified to realize that I left them at home. So I beg your forgiveness. And yeah, well, there's no notes on, and very little of what I was going to say is actually on the slide. So we'll just see how this goes. I will say, you know, one of the reasons, our infrastructure, your drinking water infrastructure, your stormwater infrastructure, our sanitary sewer infrastructure is literally out of sight, out of mind for most people, most of the time. And the longer it stays that way, really, the worse it is, because we don't, until it breaks, right? So we're here, and I know that Gladstone and Jackie and Darren are committed to talking about our infrastructure, who we are, what we do, why it matters to the people. So for those watching tonight, I hope that comes across, because I think it benefits everyone to understand the importance of infrastructure and reasonable, rational investment over time in that. So hopefully you'll see some of that. I'll talk a little bit for mostly the audience that doesn't, they not know who we are, what we do, and why we matter. And then some, some things that either happened last year or are happening in the future. So see how this goes. All right. So I'll read the vision. Wes's vision is to be a collaborative partner in building a resilient clean water feature where all people benefit and rivers thrive. What a, what a vision that is, right? Wouldn't we all like to see that? I want to focus on the collaborative partner part of that language. That, you'll, you'll see that thematically throughout this presentation, if I remember, to bring it up. So broadly, these are our focus areas. Basically, it comes down to, we protect public health, we protect the environment, and we try to do that in the most efficient and collaborative and effective way possible. The areas that we serve, we serve all the way from Happy Valley to down to Milwaukee, Oregon City, Gladstone, West Lynn, the Clackamas Industrial Area, total of about two hundred thousand people in that service area that we serve. And by we serve, I mean, we take what goes down their toilet, and we make clean water that goes out to the river. We make electricity. We generate electricity from, from what we receive from those toilets, and we create a product called BioSolids. It's an organic fertilizer that goes out to eastern Oregon for application on agricultural fields. So we call that beneficial reuse, and we're very proud of that. It takes a lot of infrastructure to do that for that many people. We have five, what we call, water resource recovery facilities. We don't call them sewage plants anymore, because they do more than just treat sewage. Combined, we treat over seven billion gallons a year. Again, our population, twenty-three pump stations, three hundred and sixty miles of pipe, nineteen, over nineteen thousand catch basins and manholes, and a total budget of almost two hundred and ninety million dollars. We also have a strategic plan. I won't get into the details of that, but in order to do the things that we do efficiently and effectively, we want to deploy best practices. And so we've, we've gathered best practices from literally across the world through, well, through various means, but, and come up with a strategic plan. Again, I won't go into it in detail. I just want you to know it's prominently featured on the front page of our website. And I think it's important that we have things like that to show the public and our customers what we do and why we do it. As far as financial stewardship, I'd call attention to the pie chart on the right. Most of the ratepayer dollars that we receive goes into operations and maintenance. We also set aside money and use money for infrastructure, either building new infrastructure or maintaining the infrastructure that we need. And we do use some debt historically to pay for that. So out of every ratepayer dollars, ratepayer dollar we receive, that's how it's roughly broken out. As far as our rates, one of the things that I think is foundational for Wes is that we've invested in planning. So since two thousand and seventeen, we've done master plans, which look out far into the future, forty, maybe even sixty years, for our collection system and what the needs are going to be there for both growth and, and maintenance, our facilities, our Tri-City facility here, our Kellogg facility, our Hoodland facility up on the mountain, our surface water needs. And so those are the kind of the long-term planning documents where we say, here's what we need, are going to need to build. We couple that with a capital improvement plan that actually lines out those projects. And we have both a five and a ten-year capital improvement plan. You guys are all familiar with those. And then finally, we marry that with a long range financial plan and rate forecast. And so that's what you're seeing there. And the goal is to deliver the infrastructure. Well, I like to say, we know what we, that tells us what we need to build, when we need to build it, and how we're going to pay for it. And I'd say that we are in a very fortunate position to be able to do all of those three things with a rate profile that looks as steady Eddie as that one does. Looking at Gladstone, last year, our rate increase was a dollar forty per month. We are, our current budget is being reviewed right now. It would take effect July first, and we're proposing another dollar and forty-five cent a month rate increase for Gladstone. Looking, you know, you may want to say, well, where are we relative to our peers in the region and around the state? This just shows that we are very competitive when it comes to the provision of sanitary sewer. And it doesn't, it doesn't show our surface water rates, but our surface water rates are even lower relative to our peers. So just a reminder for maybe folks that are watching, Wes is governed by the Board of County Commissioners. They are, make the decisions about our budget and capital projects, capital plan, things like that. But we also rely on a very robust Wes Advisory Committee that includes elected officials from each of the cities that we serve, business owners, citizen representatives. We've got folks from Clackamas Community College, folks from the watershed health arena. And so it's a very well, I think there's at least five engineers, civil engineers or environmental engineers that are on our advisory committee. So it's a really robust group that the Board of County Commissioners listens to intently. And thank you, Mayor Milch, for being the elected official on that advisory committee, and also Christopher Baucher, who's a citizen from Gladstone. He's been involved or on the committee since it was, since its inception back in, like, two thousand and seventeen. He's also a civil engineer. So he brings a whole lot to the table and helps us make good decisions. Building for the future, I mentioned, you know, the, how the master planning builds on the capital improvement planning, builds on the financial planning, and ultimately tells us how we're going to deliver things. Now, looking at some of the projects that we have ongoing right now, one of them, this doesn't directly affect Gladstone quite yet, but we are expanding the, what we call the interceptors. So those are the big pipes, the big pipes in Highway two-twelve and that are going to accommodate growth in Happy Valley for the foreseeable future. So we've got several projects, twenty, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight timeframe to upgrade that. But what I want you guys to focus on is the last part, the red line, and that black square by the lows. We call that our Intertie Pump Station. And right now, we have a pump station there that diverts a portion of the flow that comes down from Happy Valley and brings it down to our Tri-City Treatment Plant, roughly runs along I-205. That's currently a twenty-inch pipeline, but we're going to be extending, expanding that, and I'll talk more about that later. Oh, our, our, our outfall project. So hopefully you all heard, are aware that we are putting in a seven-and-a-half-foot diameter tunnel. We're using a tunnel boring machine to put a second outfall from our facility across the river out to the Willamette River that will follow the red line down Old Agnes Avenue, and then the blue line will be the part, portion that's tunneled out into the river. We are, we have broken ground on that project. We're digging a shaft roughly where that, well, exactly where the red line meets the blue line. And I just want to let folks know, there's a lot of folks that walk there, and we are going to put up some signage, let people know what's going on, what the impacts might be. But it shouldn't, other than, you know, there being construction activity there, we don't anticipate any, any interruptions or, yeah, any problems with that. But we do recognize the need to let people know what's going on, is there walking their dogs or themselves. Forgot what I was going to say on this one. Just, well, I was just, I guess, we're here twenty-four-seven, and, and we're proud of that. We want you to know that. We want the people of Gladstone to know that, that we're constantly upgrading and refurbishing and maintaining the facilities in order to serve them now and far into the future. I'll talk a little bit about our Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Program. So we recognized several years ago that while Wes owns and operates three hundred and sixty miles-ish of pipe, the cities Gladstone, West Lynn, Oregon City, Milwaukee, they have way more than that, and they all come to our facilities. And all pipes that are in the ground leak. And so we recognize that we can either build capacity at our Tri-City Treatment Plant to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars to treat essentially rainwater and groundwater that gets into the pipe, or we can work on reducing that inflow and infiltration collectively. And so we started our, our I-N-I partnership program where Wes pays for thirty-three percent of I-N-I related projects. And we have a technical advisory team that has engineering staff from each of the cities that we serve. They propose these projects, they get funded, we monitor, make sure it works, and we think collectively, over the next twenty years, we can save one hundred and twenty million dollars. And everybody will have a tighter, better, more reliable collection system. And so far, that's working really, really well. I think I'll skip, well, so this is not really related to Gladstone, but just, we have an eighty-acre facility called the Three Creeks Natural Area that we are investing millions of dollars to reconnect, to protect water quality, reconnect the stream to the floodplain, improve the watershed health in general. And we're looking at, again, the theme of being partners and collaborators. It takes a lot of people to pull off a project. It's a multi-multi-million-dollar project, and we're trying to partner and collaborate with as many people as we can.
And just to say, that's, that's a piece of property that people drive by haste all the time. So can you kind of describe where it is, so we'll know?
Yeah. So it borders Clackamas Community College Harmony Campus, so the Clackamas Aquatic Park, Eighty-Second Drive or Avenue to the, to the east, and then the Burlington Northern, the main train tracks to the south. And yeah, you don't, nobody, you don't see it unless you're at the community college and you look over the hill, you don't see it. It's a gem. It's an eighty-acre gem where three creeks, actually four, come together, and there's wetlands and wildlife habitat and Oregon white oak habitat, which is very, very rare now in the Willamette Valley. So it's a real gem, and Wes took ownership of it some years ago. We're going to go in and do our part for the water quality. And then we're going to be looking for other partners and collaborations, because we're not, you know, we don't provide public access. We can do some public education, but actually getting people down there safely, maintaining it over long term for public use is probably not going to be Wes. Could be Metro, could be NCPRD, could be the city of Milwaukee. But we will be looking for ways to take what we've, we're going to, we've, we got it. We're going to leave it better than we found it, and we hope that somebody can take it to the next level. Oh, yeah. This, this is a, the CCTV truck. So, you know, a new CCTV truck costs three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we were fortunate enough to get a new one, but we had one that was perfectly serviceable. And so we were able to sell that to the city of Gladstone for, I think, around thirty-five thousand, which is, I think, is it not just us, you know, selling you a used car, but, you know, it improves your ability to, to assess and maintain your own system. It, and it gives us a potential asset. Should we get in a dire situation, we have a piece of equipment that we may be able to access. We know how to use it. We know how to run it. And you guys have, you know, resources just across the river to, to train, to support your own, your own efforts as you develop that and start using it and integrate it into how you manage your assets.
And let me ask our Public Works Director, looking at your reports, it seems like we're getting a lot of use out of this, this piece of, of equipment. Is it paying for itself, would you say?
Oh, yeah, easily paying for itself.
Very good. Good to know.
Good. Yeah. So that was a fun one. Okay, surface water monitoring. So Wes and the city of Gladstone are co-permittees on a state mandated, or a federal-through-the-state mandated stormwater permit that says we have to do certain things. And so we have an IGA with the city where we do collection of samples and analysis, data management, reports submittal, so that Gladstone doesn't have to gear up to do that. It's, it's a small fraction of what we need to do, and so we can add that. It's economical for everybody. It improves coordination and collaboration on, you know, what we're doing, when we're doing it, and why. So. And then thank you for inviting us to the unveiling of the playground equipment a couple months ago. It was not the greatest weather, but enjoyable nonetheless. And, you know, that was a, another partnership collaboration where Wes was able, through the Good Neighbor Fund, to fund a portion of that project. The other thing, so we partner with Solve. Last year, we, and I have the numbers, I think it was something like six hundred pounds of trash that we picked up out of Meldrum Bar Park. Total we picked up, and this is through a summer water waste cleanup series that we do with Solve every year. So it's a series of events, and collectively, last summer, we got about thirty thousand pounds, if I remember correctly. So that's, and that's from, you know, adjacent to local waterways and streams that would otherwise potentially find its way in there and not be good for anybody. We, what's that? Yeah. I found a bicycle that day, too. What was I going to say about that one? Oh, and then last week, we had our kickoff event at Doll Park, which was great. We had a great turnout. And then our final event of the season, where we usually get some media coverage, is going to be at High Rocks later in the summer. I don't have a date for that, but I will let folks know. Okay, looking ahead, so the Gladstone, you guys call it the Barton Pump Station. It's near the twenty-four-hour fitness on Clackamas, I don't, Clackamas, Clackamas Road, right? So that, that pump station was built in nineteen eighty-four. We're going to be doing major upgrades to that mechanical, electrical, the communication system that communicates to our facility from that facility. And we're going to start in June. We will collaborate or work with the city and make sure that they understand our construction schedule. It's mostly going to be inside the building, but there will be a little bit outside that people may notice, so we'll be sure to coordinate on that. I mentioned the Intertie Two Pump Station. So right now, we have a twenty-inch, what we call a force main, a pressurized pipe, that goes from that facility up by Lowe's, down I-205 through Gladstone, across the Eighty-Second Drive Bridge into our facility. We're following up with a thirty-inch pipe that's next to it. So there will be some impact through Gladstone. The, the, the good thing is that somebody before me was thoughtful, and where there's insensitive environmental areas or high, high-traffic intersections, that second piece of thirty-inch pipe was already put in the ground. So it's essentially going to impact between Safeway and the DMV. But again, we will work very closely with the city and make sure that people are very clear, and we can coordinate and make sure that we're not, we're as least disruptful to Gladstone as possible as we finish those sections of pipe. And we're expecting construction late in two thousand and twenty-four, early, starting late twenty-four, early two thousand and twenty-five. And then another example of cooperation is the, we have an IGA with Gladstone. We, so Glad, we own and operate the, the, what we call the Gladstone Pump Station, the big house that we just talked about. The Eighty-Second Drive Pump Station is owned by Gladstone, but has traditionally been operated by Wes. It's at the end of its, beyond the end of its useful life. And so Wes was doing a project to look at multiple upgrades of our own pump stations, and we're able to get an IGA with the city and say, hey, we want to include this one, too, so you guys don't have to do your RFP, and there won't, you know, mobilization costs ultimately, and it, just economy of scale. So that was a good, a good example of, you know, where we can, through constant communication and understanding what the timing and needs are, we can say, okay, well, hey, we can partner on that and save, save money. And then this, this is what I wanted to end with. So this is a quote from me, you know, and this is kind of for within Wes. But when I think about Wes and the business that we do, it's like, we're all part of the clean water puzzle. And it takes not only Wes and everybody in Wes working hand in hand, but Wes and the cities and the communities that we serve, working hand in hand to really move the needle when it comes to efficiency, efficacy, and, and partnership. That's my philosophy. So I'm sure I forgot a million things, but happy to answer. I'd much rather have a conversation than give a presentation, so happy to answer any questions.
We love to have a conversation. We usually have questions from council members. So if anybody has anything they want to ask Greg, we appreciate the thoroughness of this report and the way that you've personalized it to our city, so we know what role we play and where we fit in, in some cases where we don't fit in so much, but it's still good to know how we're a part of it.
Good.
Counselor Alexander.
Well, that eighty-acre parcel you're talking about, so that, when you say behind the college area, does that go all the way behind the car max? Well, that eighty acre parcel you're talking about, so that, when you say behind the college area, does that go all the way behind the car max? On that end?
No, so, no, behind that or south of that is the, the railroad track and then McFarland Bark.
Oh, okay. So from there to the.
Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, a good baseball player could probably throw a baseball that far, but it's, it's not directly adjacent.
Okay. I just wonder. Okay. Thank.
Yeah. If you go to the mall and you're coming home, it's, it's on your right as you're heading toward the freeway exit, whichever one you're gonna.
Yeah. And that's another reason why you just can't see it because if you're on, you know, you just, there's.
Well, back in the nineteen seventy, when, right? You could go down there and ride horses.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember that? Yeah. So I, we did that when we were kids. That was.
Yep. Counselor Darlington.
I just want to say thank you because what I know about water in Oregon, we're very, very fortunate to have you on our side. So, um, thank you.
Yeah. Sometimes honestly, I know, I'm not bragging, I, I, because I, like, but some, I pinch myself. I say, you know, we're very fortunate to be in the position. There's not many public entities related to infrastructure that can say, we have long-term plans for, for our infrastructure needs. We have long-term plans for how to deliver it and we have long-term plans for how we're going to pay for it. That's, that's, that's a gem.
Well, and, and your assistance to, to local cities makes it possible for us to also have long-term plans and, and to put our plan together. And, uh, where for a long time, uh, you know, people thought, when are you going to do something? When are you going to do something? There was so much going on behind the scenes in preparation, uh, you know, locating the problems, getting the engineering fixes all sorted out. And then getting the contractor to come in and do it. But with your help on the financing, we're able to do that and make good progress. And, uh, again, it's a lot of that work, like most public work, work. It's behind the scenes. The people don't see it, but boy, if it wasn't happening, you'd really know it. And we're glad you're working with us to help it happen.
Yeah. And I would, I would just thank Gladstone staff, Public Works and, and, and others. Because now that we're having regular conversations, so we can, we can coordinate and say, okay, we, we, we have this infrastructure need and we have this infrastructure need. And here's the timing. Can we either partner on it or can we stagger it so that, you know, rate increases don't compound? You know, it, it's just having the conversation, being collaborative, uh, avoids that. I, I remember when I first became Wes, well, maybe it was a little before I became Wes Director, but it would be, hey, we, we want to have a rate increase this, this year, Wes. So we want you not to. And it's like, well, you know, maybe some years that could work, but we, that needs to be planned out. And we need to both understand what our needs are, what our timing is and how we want to pay for it and what the rate impact is. So, yeah.
Other, other, other questions from counselors? All right. Greg, thank you so much for coming to us tonight and we appreciate getting, uh, we have a printed copy of this. So we'll be able to read it again and stay well informed. Thanks very much. Thank you. All right. At this point, we, uh, is there anybody who requested to make, Gladstone City Event Announcements?
Yes, we have Lisa Preble.
Good evening, Lisa. Thank you for coming. Push that button on the speaker of the microphone again. There you go.
Hello. Thank you for giving me time to speak today. I'm a representative of the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. We wanted to give you all a big thank you for your support of the twenty twenty-four Arbor Day Plant Sale held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. With your support, our fundraiser was a success. Well, now let's get down to the details. We started by going door to door with our flyers to the local businesses in Gladstone and Oak Grove. We bought ads from Pamplin Media, we email blasted, we social media, we signed, send signs, we postcard mailers. We even got the front page of the city news player letter. And went questioned our participants or our, our purchasers. We asked them, how did you hear about the sale? They said word of mouth. And I said, wow, I said, that means people are talking about the event. How awesome is that? In addition to the plants, we had twenty vendors from Gladstone as well, was very well represented. We had the Cracksburger Gearheads offering recycling. We had the Gladstone Food Pantry collecting food and donations. We had a wonderful bonus this year as the city of Gladstone planted a native white oak tree during the sale. This was an important community builder for our nature park. The children enjoyed shoveling in the dirt and received a sticker by a city councillor and mayor. Thank you very much for your support of that. This year we did a little different than previous years. As we expanded the tables and areas for the plants, we included different plant sections. We had edibles, berries of every kind. We had annuals and we had perennials, which are plants that come back every year. We also had natives. Natives were a big hit this year. It's so nice to be able to see that people are putting more natives in their own gardens, which I thought was pretty cool. And of course the ever loved hanging baskets. After a lot of hard work, calling, emailing and developing new awareness of the Gladstone Nature Park, we ended up with twenty nurseries that donated plants. We vetted five nurseries that we could purchase the plants from, giving us almost one thousand two hundred plants to sell. Whoa, guess what? Our sales from nine to noon, we had three hundred minutes to sell all those plants. So with all the added plants, we realized we needed to set up the day before. Overnight security was hired to watch over those precious plants for possible vandalism. No two, no two A M phone call was received. We assumed it was a quiet evening. He was so surprised when at dusk out comes twenty-five bunnies wanting to devour our plants. Here he is dressed up in his bulletproof outfit and he was so surprised. He said, you know, I was prepared for possible roamers through the park. Never at one part was I prepared for bunny munchers. So our attendance was approximately five hundred and fifty. We had twenty-three different zip code cities in Oregon, six zip codes out of Washington. And our little town of Gladstone was at forty-seven percent of those numbers. Woo-hoo. What a great representation of the company, of the community. We had fifty-four volunteers the day of, and also we had, combined with the day of and the sale, over two hundred and thirty-eight hours of volunteer their precious time. We want to thank the Public Works Director, Darren Canaparoli and his city workers Scott and Rex for making the park so very beautiful. In closing, as you can see, we had lots of help and community support to make our twenty twenty-four Arbor Day Plant Sale a fun-filled event with beautiful plants and many, many smiles. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the detail of that. You, you will inspire other groups to, to put in the same amount of effort and hopefully have the same good results. It's really great to get that, that comprehensive report. So thank you to you and to the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park and all who participated. We appreciate it. All right.
We have one more, uh, Bob Everett.
Dr. Bob.
Good evening. Uh, welcome. And I'm glad you're welcoming me, I should say. It's good to see everybody, um, for the month and, uh, and hello to Jackie. And, um, I'm here just to talk a little bit about, uh, the events that are going on. I'll leave the, uh, Community Festival for the next, uh, next topic. And Bryce is also here because he knows far more about that than myself. As you saw, we gave out, uh, a little bit of the, we have the, uh, the magnets there with the events that are happening. The Arts, Arts Festival is coming on June the first. It's, it should be a lot of fun. Sarah's worked very hard on that, gotten a little, a number of vendors, a number of sponsors. And, um, I think it'll be, uh, extremely entertaining. Bryce has worked hard on that also. We're very excited about the movies in the park. I talked a little bit about it last month. We are basically beyond, um, the festival where we've always had a movie. We're going to be providing movies, um, in June, July and, um, September. We're going to piggyback on with the, uh, Community Center both in July and, uh, September. They're going to play music and then we'll have mu- um, movies afterwards. We're going to be serving some food, drinks, pop, candy, all those types of, uh, wonderful items that are very healthy for you, uh, when you go to see a movie. Uh, we tried it out in my backyard. Um, we tried one of the Raiders, um, the lost Raiders movies in my backyard. Put up the, uh, uh, speaker, the, the screen and this, and everything else. And it was, it was fantastic. I had all the neighbors looking at and being, I think they were jealous. Um, we were all bundled up, but it was, uh, it was amazing. It should be a great show. The screen was fantastic. Sound was wonderful. It was, it, it should be a lot of fun. And we're going to have a Raiders movie. We're going to have Back to the Future and then we're going to have, um, um, what's the other one? Little Shop of Hoarders. Yeah. And, um, we're also, um, going to be, I put on there sort of the bingo this, this month bingo, uh, is Friday night. We're going to have, um, uh, uh, the choir, Gladstone Choir is going to be, uh, our helpers and receive, uh, part of the money from that. And again, we're going to be serving food, drinks, uh, and, uh, and fun. This will be the last one until, uh, September. So hopefully we'll get a good turnout and, um, we can, uh, send the choir off in, uh, in luxury then too. So, um, anyway, those are the things that are happening, uh, from Rotary. We also of course sponsor, um, Taquilla. We give, we give money and events there. We sponsor, uh, the Closed Closet, which I, we go to once a month and we also provide funds for that. I'll just finish for, for me personally, I'm also in the Gladstone Senior Foundation. And, um, they're a, a, a large supporter of the Community Center, but for seniors at the Community Center. I think they're, they, they do a lot of work behind the scenes. We work very hard to provide, uh, activities and things for seniors around. Anyway, any questions? Yes.
I just want, so I didn't see on the little, sure, you say, so we have the movies in the park at nine thirty, but they're going to have a concert before that?
That's correct.
What time is that?
Well, we're going to start those, those start around six thirty, right Bryce?
I believe it's six to eight.
Six to eight.
Okay.
And then we're going to, we'll be serving food, um, at that time then too. Um, our traditional hamburgers, hot dogs and, uh, um, maybe we'll think of something else. We have, I don't know. We bought a popcorn machine also, so we have a big popcorn machine. And, um, uh, so we'll be serving soup, food, and then we'll be setting up for the movie after that. And, uh, um, I, I don't know. I'm excited for, it should be, it should be a lot of fun. Cause we had a blast in my backyard. I can give you that. So.
Council Huckabee.
I'm a little sad to see that Princess Bride did not make the cut. Oh darn.
Yeah. It wasn't that we didn't want to, but yeah, we had a hard time. Bryce, Bryce worked hard to try to get the, uh, license on that, but it just didn't work out. So, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Bob. Why don't you stay there? We'll let Bryce come up now too, because the next item on our agenda, we might, uh, need to call on you for, uh, some questions. So we move on now to our regular agenda, the items which include, uh, the Community Festival Agreement with the Gladstone Oak Lodge Rotary. Policy guidance on the climate-friendly and equitable communities related to Oregon Administrative Rule O A R six-six dash oh one-two dash oh oh one-two. A contract for professional auditing services. And the process for filling a vacancy for City Council Position Number Three per Gladstone City Charter, Chapter Thirty-two. So let's go back. Uh, Item Ten, Community Festival Agreement with Gladstone Oak Lodge Rotary. Staff, will you introduce this item for us, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a big event that's coming up in August. And each year the City Council considers approving in a festival agreement because there's a lot of activities that happen during a multi-day event. And we found that it's best for us to umbrella it under one agreement. So what you're approving for is a special event license and a noise variance for the dates of August second through the third. In your packet, you will see a breakdown of what the city is committed to providing during the festival. And also what the Rotary, the Oak, Oak Lodge Gladstone Rotary will be contributing during that. Want to call out that, uh, I know Bryce and Bob are here tonight. They will talk about the festival. They do an extraordinary job. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into planning this event. And we appreciate that they are willing to take this on as an organization. It not only has the vendor fair, the bingo, the parade, it also has the pickleball, uh, tournament, which has become very, very, um, popular. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Bryce to give you an overview of the festival and staff recommends approval of the agreement.
All right. Go ahead, Bryce.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, staff and Jackie. Appreciate the, uh, pre, preemptive. Yeah, go ahead. We are really excited because this is our hundred and thirtieth year celebrating this event. It, it started in eighteen ninety-four, so this is finally that big one thirty. This is our website. So everybody can see, please make sure that you go to this website with the fun colors. Our old website is still up, but no longer valid, same as last year. One big exciting change, we got, we got two pretty cool changes coming this year. Number one is that the multi-class reunion, which has traditionally been held at a private event space, will now be held in our beer garden, which means all four hundred of those people's drinking money will end up going to local education projects and whatnot, and will get spread around the community even more. That'll bring more people down there and in lieu of that, because of that, we are also making the stage cooler. So we're going to have a big dance floor on there at Saturday night. Like, we're going to get the lights, get some laser lights going. I already got the orders in with the, uh, sound engineer. So, so we're just, every year we try to add some attraction value to it and, and tweak our processes so it goes cleaner than the year before. But, uh, knock on wood, we've had really great luck in the past. No major problems ever. And, and I want to keep that going. Finally, I would like to, to show everybody this beautiful gold volunteer button there. And, and that is a, for a two-hour shift, we need people to watch the bouncy houses and the slides and stuff. It's fun. You get a little megaphone. It's a little megaphone. I call it a moderate phone. And so, and then you get a, a beer and a drink ticket with it, a beer and a meal ticket. So, so we always feed and water our volunteers and, and we show your appreciation for them, but it's a ton of fun. Please go to that, go to that button and sign up for a two-hour shift. It's a great way. You get the warm fuzzies. And, and more excitingly than anything, I read this wonderful article from Yale the other day. They did this study that going to a community festival, a community event, anything like this, music festivals, they will have, have been able to objectively say that it will increase your connection to humanity and will make you want to do random kind deeds for strangers for up to six months after going. So for the betterment of everybody, show up to the festival, play some bingo, have some fun. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
So I'm on your volunteer website right now. You better jump on, uh, dunk tank and slides or you'll get stuck with Saturday night cleanup. Fair warning to everybody. Start now. Make sure.
Luckily, there's not gonna be a Saturday night cleanup. Yes. So I should probably take that down. I do have the five open that way. Somebody wants to come help because we're actually getting security through Saturday night to Sunday. In the past, it's been the two of us and my dad and our upcoming president. Last year we were, we were there till two, three in the morning and just getting everything cleaned up. We're working smarter, not harder nowadays.
But we could use people on Sunday.
Sunday afternoon cleaned up.
Yeah.
So you're going to get that changed so that you have a time on there?
Yeah.
So you need volunteers to work the beer garden, you said?
That, that, you should come and talk with us privately about that one. We're not, we're not putting up beer garden volunteer up for public.
And then I got one more question because I, I get asked a lot this. So you guys are doing it. This is the thing. I've heard all kinds of stuff. Couldn't afford the name, this, that. Why does it not call Chautauqua Festival anymore?
So we will admit, we got the chance last year to take back the Chautauqua name and we have decided not to do it. So, so just to make history a little clear, it was Chautauqua from eighteen ninety-four to nineteen twenty-six. So, and then after nineteen twenty-six, it went to Festo Fund from twenty-six to eighty-six. Um, so, and then after nineteen twenty-six, it went to Festo Fun from twenty-six to eighty-six. So that actually the, the majority of its life, it has been known as the Fest of Fun. It went back to Chautauqua for a short stint. And, and we choose, one, Chautauqua is very difficult to spell. Um, there is a lot of misassociation that people believe it has to do with a local native tribe, and that is just simply not the case. Um, Chet, it means Chateau of Aqua, house of water in French. It's from Lake Chautauqua, New York. It was a Methodist movement that started back in the early eighteen hundreds that swept its way across the nation and the world. And, and if you were not here between nineteen eighty-six and, and two thousand and ten, then you don't know what a Chautauqua is. And the community festival says exactly what it is. It is a celebration of community. It is us coming together and we, we've put, as the Rotary Club, we've put a ton of work into this branding and, and doing another rebrand would cost us several grand.
Oh, great. Didn't know that. So now I can, I can give.
Share, share the word and please like tell your friends. It's the community festival because that's what we're celebrating is coming together.
I think, uh, again, it just came up last year and we're able to use it. And I think we've just sort of gotten ourselves so involved as a group in the name of Community Festival that it was very, we debated it, we talked about it. But we all, really all of us, um, e- even people who had lived here decided that really that we're so involved with Community Festival that it just was going to be very difficult to change for us to go back. So that's, that's, that, that's the bottom line.
Makes sense.
Great question.
Yeah.
Council Huckabee?
I just want to say thank you. That's the right choice to make and I appreciate you guys doing what's right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very much. Thank you.
All right. We have a detailed draft of an agreement here, uh, to, uh, and, and I appreciate that it spells out all the various responsibilities and that your experience in doing this event has made it possible for us to kind of itemize these things and who's in charge of what, and for the city to, uh, make a determination as to how many hours, uh, city employees and staff are working on this event and plus all the volunteer help that you bring in. So, uh, you know, the theme tonight, starting with Greg, was collaboration and we do collaborate on this. But by having an agreement between us, it becomes very clear who's responsible for what and to what extent and all the contingencies. And so, uh, are there any questions from council members about the agreement that's in our agenda?
No, it's just nice to see though that so we saved a lot of money by not doing the library book sale, right? Is that, did the festival save that money or is that the city?
Yeah, that's what it would cost for our Public Works employees to have to do.
To move those books?
Yes.
So we're going to get that savings this year since we're not doing.
We're not going to expend it this year.
Okay, thank you.
That was just, there were many things that sort of tacked on to us, but we didn't really organize them that they just happened to be at that time and two, and that was one.
Well, and, and that reminds me too, a lot of people associate the car show with the festival. Uh, it is a separate sponsoring group and we may get a request from them and we may have a similar agreement if it's needed. Uh, but it's not officially part of yours. Uh, but, um, I, and I don't think I'm out of turn by saying it's likely to be the same weekend. We just haven't heard and, uh, firmed it up yet.
I, yeah, it's worked out well. People always ask. I think that would be a great thing if they did that, but they are separate. So, yeah.
All right. Uh, would anyone on the city council like to make, uh, a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to sign the Gladstone Community Festival Agreement and approve the special event and noise variance applications with the Gladstone slash Oak Grove Rotary Club for the dates of August two through three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Council Alexander, seconded by Council Huckabee. Any further discussion? All right. Council Garlington, you had your, uh, mic on. Is it okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Well, we'll wait till we get to you. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Council Huckabee.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Council Roberts.
Yes.
Council Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the motion passes six zero.
Hey, thank you all. And I'd also like to give a big, whoa, I'm a lot closer this time, huh? Thank you for your changes to the community sponsorship program. Now that, now that, um, it has been open to an organization to apply to four times, we were able to avail ourselves of a lot of extra funding for this arts fair and for the movies in the park. So like, that is a great program and I want to see more groups do that kind of stuff. So please keep that going for the good of the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item. Uh, last month, the city council and planning, uh, commission had a joint work session to work on, uh, what Gladstone is going to do to implement the climate friendly and equitable communities parking reform program. So, uh, we have our administrator here tonight and Heather Austin, our planner is on Zoom with us. So take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to our planning consultant, Heather Austin, to give you a brief overview. I did want to say that in your packet, we provided a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we had at the work session with the planning commission. However, we did not plan on going through that again tonight. It's just for reference material. So with that, I will have Heather summarize, uh, what we're asking for the council tonight.
Thank you, Jackie. Good evening, council and Mayor Milch. It's good to be here with you this evening. Um, as Jackie said, we did a detailed presentation on April twenty-third when we met in work session with the planning commission. So we included the slides in the packet and a link to that meeting in case anyone on the council or from the public was interested in reviewing those materials. Uh, this evening, what we are looking for is direction from council so that we can begin the work to update our development code to implement, uh, one of the options available to us for parking reform. And just as a, a brief reminder, uh, this pack, this begins on page one hundred and thirty of your packet this evening, eleven dash one, um, is the section number. We did, um, have three options available to us. That's very simplified. There are some requirements for parking reform that we are already required to do, such as not mandating any parking off-street to occur within a half mile of McLaughlin Boulevard. And that is because it is a high-frequency transit corridor. We are not able to mandate more than one parking space off-street for each multifamily unit of housing. Um, there are several other, uh, requirements that we're not able to mandate parking for that we are already implementing in the city. And then moving forward from that, we have some options. The first option is to not mandate parking anywhere in the city. So saying the entire city, nobody has to do a minimum amount of parking, we'll leave it up to the market and assume that a project, uh, designer will include the parking that is necessary for the development. The second option, which is called the fair policies, um, allowed you to choose at least two of a table of five options. Um, and I think we heard direction from the council and planning commission at the April twenty-third work session that this was likely the path we wanted to take. Um, and those five options are to unbundle parking from residential units. So leasing parking spaces separate from your multifamily housing, to unbundle commercial parking spaces. So looking at commercial buildings and having the parking be leased separately from the building itself, providing flexible commuter benefits that would require businesses with fifty or more employees to provide anyone not using a vehicle to get to work on a regular basis, a benefit of at least fifty dollars a month as a commuter benefit, taxing commercial parking lots. We don't have any commercial parking lots currently in Gladstone, but if we did in the future, we'd be able to implement a local tax that we could use toward non-auto related transportation improvements such as sidewalks. And then finally, uh, mandating that no higher than one half of a parking space per multifamily unit um, is what we put in place. So option two allows us to choose two of those five options. And then option three is called reduced red tape and it has, um, a laundry list of items that you implement all of them. Um, but at the meeting on April twenty-third, we did discuss the impacts of reducing, removing all mandates through the city. And there was some concern about the potential for middle housing type developments occurring in our, our five medium density, uh, neighborhoods and allowing some parking mandates to still be required with those types of uses. And so it sounded like option two, where we would unbundle commercial parking and require a tax on commercial parking lots of any commercial parking lots in the future would be the direction that the council would like us to pursue and bring forward planning, uh, and development code amendments to that order. So with that, I will stop there and see if there's any questions or any discussion. Um, but what we are looking for the council to do tonight is direct us to begin the work on one of the options. And we are putting forward that that would be option two, um, up with sub options two and four.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, Council Garlington has a question or comment?
Question. Um, so it says here that we have to have those mandates done by December thirty-first. And who do, who, who are we answering to with our decisions?
The state of Oregon. So we are required to actually have those in place by June thirtieth of this year, but we did request an extension. Um, and we were provided that to December thirty-first.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions, but this is something that I've continued to research beyond our, uh, previous meeting. And at this point, I still feel comfortable with our options, uh, much for the same reason that the city of Sherwood clearly states here in the staff report provided by Jackie. It's the, you know, least, um, least impactful to the citizens of the community. I see very little uh, consequences or fallout from this. So I would feel comfortable formally directing staff to proceed with these options.
All right. That's helpful information. Councilor Cook?
Um, just because I was unable to attend the work session, um, I just wanted to make sure I still was able to participate. Um, so I did watch the, the video of the presentation. I thought the questions that were asked and the discussion that was had was um, wonderful. Um, if I had been there, I would have been one of the voices advocating for option one, no parking mandates. Um, I think that the city should not be in the business of subsidizing private, private vehicle storage. Um, but, um, I do like that option two offers the ability for the city to change our minds should the situation change at some point in the future. Um, so I would be very happy to support option two, including policies two and four.
Thank you very much. And as a business owner in an area where there is off-street parking and regulations and, um, uh, you know, uh, parking management actively going on, uh, we are counting on you, uh, as we move through this to, to, to share from your personal experience of how that, how that works and what's effective and what isn't. So, uh, uh, we'll, we'll hold you to that as we move forward.
Interesting wearing two hats, right?
Yes.
You know, being, having self-interest, but then also thinking about what's best for the community. And I think in this particular situation, you know, I'm wearing the hat of what's best for the community. And, um, yeah, it's an interesting, uh, situation.
Thank you.
I'm here for it, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Other comments, questions?
I agree, I agree with both of them because I, if you watched that, um, Council Cook, I was one. I spoke out one because I feel the same way. We shouldn't be in the bit, but uh, for the same reason, option two, so we can always go back to option one. Once we pick option one, we have no choice. So we're stuck. So I'm for option two with the two options too.
All right. Any comments? Council Huckabee?
I guess, since everybody else is making comments. Um, so I did not watch the work session, but that's okay because after the meeting Veronica and I had, um, a good chance to meet up and she filled me in and we discussed it. Um, so I would just echo what Council Roberts has said.
All right. Very good. Um, I, I too have done a little additional reading about, uh, other cities and why they decided what to do. Um, you know, we always have this concern at the city level when, uh, mandates come to us from on high, from the state level. Uh, uh, and, and even mandates to the citizens, uh, from on high from them, which is us, which is, you know, from the city council, uh, passing laws and rules. Um, but we balance that with, uh, things that developed, that development and, uh, uh, production in the city that, that kind of bubbles up from underneath too. And it's, it's great to get kind of a balance of those two. And so I think part of our thinking in that work session, as I recall, was that, um, if we just concede that we wouldn't do any mandates anywhere, we kind of lose all control over it. And if we have, uh, some of these, adopt some of these other rules, but still retain the right to have some restrictions, then, uh, we're not going to be in an unfortunate situation in the future where we feel like we have no control over it at all. So I think it's a good compromise. Um, I, I am in agreement with the comments you've made and also in agreement with Councilor Cook that, uh, you know, the mandates, uh, parking mandates, uh, do put the city in the position of, uh, storing a lot of automobiles on city property. Uh, you know, we, we don't give away homes for free. We shouldn't give away homes for cars for free. Uh, but we'll figure out a way to manage the parking that we have, uh, in a way that's effective. Whether that means imposing some time limits so that, uh, business owners and operators aren't taking up all the parking spaces for employees in the business district, but making sure there's healthy turnover and that it works in a positive way for residents, for commercial properties, uh, and everyone. One thing to clarify, and I'm, I appreciate that we got some clarification on this almost right after our meeting. Uh, these other rules that we have about unbundling commercial parking will apply not just to, uh, a designated parking district, but will apply across the city to all businesses. So when leases change, uh, uh, businesses that have, uh, uh, that are leasing property that includes commercial parking, uh, they will pay for the parking separate from, uh, the lease for the land. Uh, and we'll have to figure out, part of this process will be figuring out a way, how do we enforce that? How do we put that in our code? But one of the great things about being a small city is that some of these mandates from the state do come with financial support to enable us to, to do that technical work. And this is one of them. So, uh, it, in a sense, it's a, not an unfunded mandate, but a partially funded mandate, uh, that helps us do something geared specifically to this city. So, uh, I, I'm hearing a consensus of the, of the, from the, uh, council that we want to direct staff to begin to work on this. We're not adopting these things tonight. The, the, the language needs to come before, I believe, the planning commission at some point and then us. Heather, I see you nodding your head. So that will be how, that's how it'll work in the future.
Yes, this will be a legislative, uh, plan amendment. So we will provide deal city notice. We'll go through the public hearing process at planning commission at its, and at city council.
Okay. So we will have an opportunity again for the public to weigh in on this, uh, in, in that process. And, uh, pardon me, and Chad Jacobs or another member of our city attorney's team will help us to be sure that we, uh, but dot all the i's and cross all the t's on that process in putting those new laws into place. So, okay, I think we've given you that direction then to proceed. Thank you, uh, council for your participation in this and for your input. And, uh, I think we're there. Uh, Heather, thank you very much for coming tonight and resourcing us on this issue. And for the future work to be doing as well.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to, uh, item twelve, approval of a contract for professional auditing services. Jackie, I guess it's up to you again.
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, we were put on notice by Marina and company that they were getting out of the auditing business. And we had thought last year that we were going to have to go out and solicit proposals. However, they gave us a one-year extension. So our finance consultant, Kathy Brooker, is going to walk you through the process that the city took and share with you how we got to our recommendation for tonight.
Good evening, Kathy. Welcome.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your time here tonight for this item. Uh, this, as I say, as Jackie said, it is for the approval of our professional auditing services. And as you know, both the city and the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency must be audited annually on our financial activity per state law. Our previous audit firm is, Jackie was saying Marina and Company has discontinued these services and slowly working out of all of their audits, which necessitated us going out for a request for proposal from qualified firms. Uh, the RFP was issued on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four for a five-year contract with a qualified certified public accounting firm. We received three qualified, uh, proposals from Singer Luak accountants and consultants, Aldrich CPAs and advisors, and Talbot Corvola and Warwick. They were all very good firms and we were really fortunate. They were all very good firms and we were really fortunate to receive them. There is a shortage of municipal auditors in the state, basically nationwide anymore. And many cities received no responses to their RFP and subsequently must repeat the process. So we were really pleased to see three proposals come back. The proposals were reviewed and scored. Jackie and myself, we took, did that step and then forwarded them to the Gladstone Audit Committee on April 17th for their consideration of the responses that satisfied our criteria. So with the agreement of the Audit Committee, the firm of Singer-Luac Accountants and Consultants was selected as the most qualified and also a very compatible firm with the city of Gladstone. Singer-Luac has extensive government-focused experience and currently conducts over 45 municipal audits per year out of the two offices in Oregon. Gladstone will work with the Salem office, whose personnel have a combined 50 years of experience in Oregon, PERS, local budget law, and all facets of governmental accounting and auditing. Neighboring cities that have worked with the firm provided excellent work references. And then combining that with the very impressive audit approach that I thoroughly appreciated and the understanding along with a really dynamic work plan. The city rec, well, the city felt very good in going forward with this proposal. We recommend a five-year agreement for their services. The anticipated fees are somewhat higher than the previous firm, but will be manageable within the remaining budget for the 2023, 2025 biennium. Included in the packet was the request for proposal along with the Singer-Luac response for council review. The options there are very limited due to the legal requirement of the annual audit and quality of proposal responses. No other options were considered. Our cost impact for the proposed fees for both the city of Gladstone and the Urban Renewal Agency combined are $51,300. Sufficient budgetary appropriation of $55,000 is available for the 2324 fiscal year ending. And the proposal, excuse me, calls for a 5% increase per year in costs along with a separate single audit fee, but only if necessary due to federal grant funding levels received. Currently, I'm not anticipating we will need it for the 2324 audit, but most likely will in the subsequent year because of the ARPA funds that we've received. Staff does recommend approval of the five-year contract for professional audit services with Singer-Luac Accountants and Consultants commencing with the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. And I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have about the firm or its qualifications.
All right. Counselor Alexander has a question?
So I just want, just to make clear, so most bids we go out with and it's the lowest bid. This one is for qualifications. That's what the audit, audit committee looked at, not this firm was cheaper or whatever it was. It was the qualifications and the quality we're going to get, correct?
Yes, the professional qualifications of it and the, looking at it from a very organic and a, you know, a overarching sense of what they are able to provide for us.
Okay. And then I went back on, on 12-19. So I mean, we're, we're good till it says 2025 here. And then we're going to have to like make some kind of adjustments in the budget going forward to 2029 for the five-year, I mean.
Yes, we will. We will have to.
Have that all figured out.
They have about a 5% increase per year.
Per year. That's a good jump.
Well, 5% increase, actually, Councilman Alexander, we have actually paid that every year to Marina and.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's very standard in the industry with the firm.
Okay. But they were cheaper, but then we paid the 5%. This, this place is a little more and we're going to play it by, okay. I just want, just making that clear for everyone to understand. Thank you.
Thank you for those clarified questions. That's helpful. You're right. We've done so many contracts lately. We, we look at RFQs instead of RFPs or the vice versa, and sometimes we don't understand how, how that works differently. So thank you for getting that clarification. Counselor Garland?
I just have, I have one question and I should have emailed you earlier. So my apologies for having this conversation out loud. I noticed in our check register that we paid Marina $24,650 last month. So are we talking about doubling what Marina was charging us?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay.
That was the final payment to Marina and Company. The total for the Urban Renewal Agency in the city was roughly right around $45,000 for the year. We were getting a very good rate for Marina and Company because we had been with them for so many years. And so their, their rate was kept, even though it increased 5% per year, it was kept quite low.
Okay. There, I, one of the reasons I was asking about that is that yes, although there may have been leftover money to pay this $51,000, I thought that was quite a jump, but really it's just, it's less than $10,000 at the end of the day. So, and, and that you're all comfortable with.
And some of that comes from the Urban Renewal Agency budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering that. Appreciate it.
Of course.
All right. And it was good to have clarification too, you know, sometimes if, if we've worked with somebody for a long time and then we no longer work with them, we, we wonder. But it was, you know, they gave us the, it's not you, it's me, excuse. And, and, and I, I'm appreciative that they stayed with us an extra year. Because, and, and this is good because we, I don't know when we did the audit recently, but it does, it's not that long ago. So it's still kind of fresh in our minds, the process and how we go through it. I appreciate that Gabby Blog from our Audit Committee is here and thank you to your committee. You thought you were done, see, when we got through the audit and then we called upon you again to help guide us through this process. And we appreciate the recommendation that you've given us and the work that your committee has done. So thank you. Any other questions from council members or would someone like to make a motion to do the recommended staff action?
I'll make a motion that we approve the five-year contract for professional auditing services with Singer-Luac Accountants and Consultants commencing with the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
All right. Is there a second?
A second?
All right. Counselor Alexander and Counselor Huckabee have been doing the, the motions and seconds tonight. Thank you very much again. All right. Well, if there's a really complicated wordy one, I think we'll count on Council Roberts for that. He's, he's the one who still has his eyes and can read it from the paper. Okay. So any other discussion?
None.
All right. Tammy, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. Now, the motion passed a six zero, but contract recommendation is approved.
Mayor Milch?
Yes.
Before we move on, I'd like to publicly compliment Kathy Brooker. Seven years ago, she came to this city for three months and here we are almost into the eighth year. And many cities around the state are scrambling to get an auditor. And I think that Kathy's relationship in the industry is what attracted us to get three good qualified bids. So I just wanted to say thank you, Kathy, for your work on this and thank you for the city of Gladstone.
Thank you so much.
All right. Our last regular agenda item. Seat next to me is empty. Take it away.
It isn't. I'm going to let your city attorney take it away on this one.
Attorney Jacobs?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So as you know, there's a empty seat sitting next to the mayor and we need to declare a vacancy based on the resignation letter that we received. And then as you see in the staff report, there is a process set forth in the charter and municipal code fulfilling that vacancy. So we would just need a little bit of direction from you all about how you want to proceed in compliance with those provisions. As noted in the staff report, because there are more than 17 months remaining on the term, the person that you're appointing will just fill the seat until next November's election, at which time it will be a special election to fill the remainder of the term. And so that'll just be a special election for that one seat for the remaining two years, basically two years. But in the meantime, we need to appoint someone to serve between, you know, June and November of this year until the election can occur. So what we're looking for is one, a motion that would be approved by you all declaring the vacancy. And then two, some direction about filling the vacancy and timing and all that as you're used to. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, otherwise I'll turn it over to you all for discussion.
Chad, as far as declaring the date of the, effective date of the vacancy, Council Reichel's resignation was effective April 30th. Can we make it May 1st retroactive? Or is it have to be today or in the future?
You can make it retroactive.
Okay. So, so we, we will, at some point in this process, be entertaining a motion to declare vacancy effective May 1st, 2024, just to give everybody a heads up on that. And now I will turn to councillors for other questions. We have been through this recently and so we are familiar with it. And we used a process that solicited written applications. We've done interviews sometimes, hasn't been a consistent way that we've done, I don't think. But the questions that are on the application, would you like to keep the same questions we have asked in the past in our recent dealings with vacancies? Council members, any thoughts on that? I don't think we have a copy of the application here, but one of the questions that we asked before, because this was a position that was only going to fill a portion of the remainder of the term, and we knew that there would be a need for people to run for office. We had a question on the application form asking them whether they intended to run for the position when it came up in the November election. And I think that was a significant a matter that helped people decide who they were going to support. Sometimes you want somebody who doesn't plan to go forward and just will, will focus on the short term. Sometimes you want somebody who is in it for the long haul and will seek to run for reelection. So do we want that question on there or not? Any thoughts?
I have some thoughts.
Yes, Counselor Huckabee?
So I recently watched a neighboring city council have this discussion with a recent appointment. It turned the appointment process. In, in my opinion, it was a very negative meeting because they, a few of them were like, well, we don't really want somebody who's going to run. And then the remainder of the council was like, well, if we didn't want them to run, then why didn't we put that, you know, in the application process? And it was, it was just all in all very, very negative. I don't know. I don't recall if it became such an issue with us last time, but it's just me not recalling. It may have. I don't remember. So that's just food for thought. I don't, I'm not suggesting one way or the other.
I think that question should still be on there. I don't think I, I personally used it to go one way or another, but I found it still relevant to know that. Personally, I hope whoever would come would be interested in serving out the remaining two years beyond that. I think sitting up here, you go to enough of these meetings, you sit down with these groups and you learn a lot. And that knowledge become, you know, you just kind of compound on that. So I'd like to see someone who wants to get in and wants to fill the remain, remainder of that term. But if, if we don't have people that are interested, then you know, that's our selection pool.
I agree with Counselor Robert. I didn't, it didn't really, I mean, the question was on there and it was like, you glanced and said, okay, if they do get selected, then they will run and they will, they'll have a little bit of knowledge going into it. So it was, yeah, it's exactly, yeah.
Counselor Cook?
Oh, I have two thoughts, but I'm trying to get them in order before I speak. I think, I think it's fair to ask the question. I think if we are going to ask the question, I think it would be a good idea for us to reach a consensus around what we want. Because I think to your point, Counselor Huckabee, you know, having a split decision about whether, like what the, what the outcome is, like what the desired outcome is, I think that creates the friction. So I think that would be a good thing for us to decide is what, what do we want? Do we want someone who's just going to do it part-time or do we want someone who's in it for the long haul? I think something to think about too is, you know, I went through this process recently. One of the things that appealed to me about being able to, you know, step in temporarily without committing to a full term was that that did make it easier to, that made it an easier on-ramp into volunteering for my city in this way. Because I have two children, five and under, have a small business that I'm working 80 hours a week. It's a big commitment. My life is running at 80 miles an hour. So committing for four years as a hard commitment, which I think someone should do if they're going to run for office, they should be committing for that full term. You know, it's, it's a big commitment to walk into not knowing how that's going to fit into your life. And I think that that also brings additional questions of equity, right? Like I think that we need to be actively looking for people who have, who are not the traditional people who are on city council. And I think that giving folks that ability to commit for a short term and say, yes, it's okay if this is only three months. If you try this out, you serve your city for three months and it turns out to be a bigger commitment than your life can handle, then that's okay. Like, thank you for your service and we appreciate what you did for the city. So that was a little bit messy, but just throwing it out there because I think that, you know, that's been on my mind honestly lately is that this is, you know, being on council has been a personal challenge for me to juggle all of these things. But I think that it's important to make sure that we have parents of young children represented on this council. I think it's important that we have people who are working high demand jobs on this council, not that anyone else isn't. But it's, you know, we want to make sure that we're having a good cross-section of the city on the council. And so we need to be thinking about that when we're deciding questions like this. And I'll stop talking now.
All right. That's, that's helpful feedback. I think the, the, one of the, the difficult decisions with appointing someone to a council is there's a feeling that you've taken it away from the vote, the citizens, the voters. So by having our charter written the way it is, where we're not appointing somebody for remained, for, you know, the remainder, two and a half years of this term, we're just doing it temporarily and then we will have, give, turn it over to the citizens. And I think, Counsel Roberts, you made a good point. We're not going to require that somebody run if they choose to be, if they want to be appointed. And, and I, I like the fact that a lot of you referred to it as the opportunity to, to get on board, to see where you want to go. And come, come November or come whatever the, well, it won't be that long, probably August, come the, the time for filing for candidacy, people will, whoever we appoint will have had an opportunity to, to consider it. But I appreciate your observations, Counselor Huckabee, on the other city because sometimes, you, you know, you don't want to compel people one way or the other. You want to appoint the person who will, you know, let us continue to flow and do the work of the city. And, and not have, and, and whatever criteria we have individually, that will come into play for our decision. But I don't think we need to, to mandate any decision on, on the part of whoever we, whether the candidates happen to be, the, the applicants happen to be for that. So, all right. So we have a, we have a system in place then that has worked for us recently and will work for us again. So I will entertain a motion regarding the vacancy. Who would like to make that motion?
Does it require a motion or just a?
I think it does. We, we need to.
I would make a motion then that at this time we declare vacancy on the council and advise staff to move forward with filling the vacancy.
And will you accept a, an amendment to make the vacancy effective May 1st, 2024?
Certainly.
Okay. All right. That's what I understand your motion to be. Is there a second of that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jackie, does that give you all the direction you need or would you like us to provide any further clarification or?
We have applications ready to go tomorrow. We will advertise for two weeks. We will hopefully bring this back to you at the June 11th meeting and I think we've got everything we need for tonight.
All right. And the other thing that we did in the past, I know from personal experience, when we have multiple applicants and we know we are going to make an appointment at a meeting, we send all the applicants a copy of the agenda and ask them to be prepared to step in that night. That's the way it will work this time. So.
And as applications come in, we will send those to you and I encourage you to reach out and talk to the applicant. And as applications come in, we will send those to you and I encourage you to reach out and talk to the applicants as to why they wanna be on council. There's nothing that prohibits those one-on-one conversations.
One-on-one directly with the applicants, not with one another though.
Correct.
Because that is the decision that will become before us in our open meeting law. We, we don't discuss it with each other. Okay. Another question, Counselor Garlington?
I was just wondering, um, do you think it would be possible to email our boards? And let them know that that spot is now vacant? I would love to see some participation from um, our, our boards and commissions. And I think it might be helpful, they, you know, maybe they may not know that this is happening and, and just a quick email out to those folks. Would be helpful.
Our current active volunteers are some of our best potential counselors. I, I agree with you.
I believe so.
So whatever communications process we do, that, let's try to include that. I'm sure it will be in your weekly report.
It will be. It's um drafted there and I think it's a great time to be in the city of Gladstone. So who wouldn't wanna be on the council?
All right. Uh, Counselor Roberts made the motion to declare the vacancy and instruct staff to, to work on the procedure. Was there a second? Counsel Alexander seconded the motion. Uh, further discussion? I see none. So Tammy, go ahead.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Milt?
Yes, uh, the motion is approved. The uh, position is declared vacant and staff has their uh, instructions. All right. Uh, Ms. Betts, is there any business carried forward?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
And Tammy, is there any business from the audience?
I have no, received no requests.
All right. Um, our uh, planning, our, our council agenda tonight includes our council agenda planning. Planning documents, so you can look ahead and think about what's coming up in the future. I'm grateful to staff for doing all the scheduling and planning ahead and making sure that the people we need to hear from uh, are. Uh, you know, have us on their schedule and come here tonight as Mr. Geist did and, and others. So uh, we're grateful to staff for um, for managing all the work that this council has to do in our meetings. So uh, we are, it's time for um, business from the council. So I'll start, um, I'll start down on my left with Counselor Garlington and work my way across the dais. Counselor Garlington, are you ready?
Yeah, I get to be the first one to say that our public works building is finished. And we all got to go and watch the big scissors get cut and it was really exciting. And I think that it's gonna be an enjoyable place to come to work each day and be able to have warm food at lunch. And warm, warm, warm place when, in the middle of winter and I'm just excited for that. Um, I wanna say thank you again to everyone who was able to come to the plant sale. Um, our group works so hard. Um, but money, we have to have money to make a bigger stuff happen. And I appreciate all of you acknowledging that, that, that that group works really hard. And that they, you know, warrant that um, are backing a little bit. And uh, the tree is gonna be fun. What do they say? Planting a tree means that you can see the, you can see past the future or something like that. I wish I had it, but I don't. I didn't get a chance to say thank you, but our Tuck Willa dinner this month that we held. Um, I had six volunteers that came and served dinner, but the Rotary funded it, the whole thing. It was super kind of them and we just really appreciate their efforts. So that was really nice. And they um, man, we were able to purchase some uh, what we call leftover boxes. And those are just really important because there's a lot of people at Tuck Willa that I've, sure, I've said this before. They don't feel comfortable coming out of their rooms, but they're the first ones to show up once the refrigerator is full. So that's really important. We uh, do have, um, we've talked a little bit with the food bank and we're gonna, uh, now that the food bank, I feel like is a little more secure. And a lot of people are supporting the food bank in our community at, you know, that comes from the, some of the um. The, the fundraisers that other community members have done and then at our plant sale we did. Uh, the food bank was there and people were able to bring canned goods and they received a lot of cash donations. So that was really good too. Anyway, circling back around, the food bank is going to help us uh, host a dinner. Because the food bank gives uh, food to the folks at Tuck Willa. We're gonna do another event that shows them how to make foods, how to make meals with what you get. That's, so that's what we're trying to do there. And keeping in mind that the folks at Tuck Willa do have full use of that kitchen. So that's there. And I, um, so the last thing I wanna say is thank you so much for allowing me to go to Clamath Falls. The League of Oregon Cities um, uh, conventions are such a learning process. Like I said to uh, the gentleman that came from Wes and sorry, I forgot his name really quick, but that's okay. Learning where other cities are in various parts or various uh, projects. And what they're doing, their water, their housing, how their council works. Um, uh, what projects people are doing, what big things uh, people are doing. That it's all really exciting to learn about. And it also does my heart well to say to all of you that we're doing it well. We're doing it really well and our staff and our administrator and the people that she hires. We're getting it done and we should be so proud of ourselves and them, our staff for that. Because it's, 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 it's not something that we have to go to bed at night and worry that our folks can't turn on water. That we don't have enough police people, we, all of that, all the things and more, we're doing it right. So I just wanna share two classes that I took that really resonated with me a lot, especially since we've been talking about um, helping. In Milwaukee hire that um, what do they call them, navigators? Um, it, with their police force and working with people who need that one-on-one in order to come out. And be uh, and, and he- ask for guidance and that kind of thing. So anyway, uh, Friday morning I took a class on mental health from a lady named Jessica from a company called Canopy. Not sure if it's a company or not. She was phenomenal. I've never heard people talk about mental health like that. Where people are um, and how your gener- the generational. Um, how, uh, how you live generationally uh, uh, comes into um, account for. How your life could possibly be and how um, you know, little things they talked about. Like a teacher that is in a child's life that may not have, you may not think has a chance. At all to thrive and that one teacher, that one person that comes into their lives. And that could be anybody in this room, anybody. That you, you made the difference to that one person somewhere that made their life such a better thing. And that should just, I mean, that just warms my heart. So. And then we did a, uh, we listened to the Sheriff Hunter from Marion County and he's the one that talked about the navigators. They have four navigators in Marion County and um, which is, will have two. Once Clackamas County can find another one, but they have four and this huge program already uh, in place. Two things that he said that uh, hit, resonated with me. One is that children are the new drug dealers because you can't put them in jail. And that's a real sad state of affairs, in my opinion. It, it seriously brought a tear to my eye to think that somehow a child would be doing that. So, you know, that's something that we have to think about and that's sad that we have to think about it. And then they, again, the navigators and what they can do for your community and. We're, what a great program. We're, we're on it. Again, we're on it. Um, and then I listened to uh, housing and uh, two talks on housing. And one of the things they said is, you know, you can't just talk about it. And some of the communities are, obviously have land to build and things like that. And uh, Clackamas County is doing a really good job, but there's still a lot of work to be done out there. There's a lot of money and a lot of work to be done. And of course, we all know it doesn't move super fast at every time. And then I did a class on uh, women's studies through Portland State University and that was, um, it was really good. And they talked about what leads you to be elected and what leads you to, you know, stay in it for the long haul. As we know, we've had counselors and mayors before us that have stayed with it for a long, 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 long time. And um, so what, what keeps us in it? And as you said, it's having that representation from a family like mine or, you know, a young person. Or a senior citizen, which is where I'm headed really shortly. And Mr. Milt, you're just right there with me. So that's okay, because we have really good representation here. And um, I'm, I'm just, I am so proud to go to these kinds of things and say to them, we're doing it. So thank you all for that. That's all. I know I talked a long time. I'm sorry.
Thank you for having a long enough umbilical cord to be willing to go down to Clamath Falls and represent us. You know, I, I don't get past the Winco in Oregon City most of the time. So uh, you know, the idea of driving to the other end of the state and driving back for the.
For the plant.
For the plant sale. Yeah, that, that's, that's beyond me. So we're grateful to you and glad to, we can support you having you there. Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
It's, it's hard to follow up everything that Counselor Garlington just shared there, but to compound uh, how well Gladstone is doing it beyond just our city. Uh, I participate in the Gladstone School District's Budget Committee, just as a regular layman. And, and again, really well-managed program. Uh, the leadership they have over there with Rachel Hopper. Uh, the program that she's put together is now award-winning. Uh, Gladstone School District was one of three districts in the entire state. To win awards for the format, the presentation, the clarity, everything that goes into that budget is now an award-winning budget. They're very proud of it and they absolutely should be. Um, it was an extremely easy read long. I'll give them that, but uh, well put together. So it's very easy to be a part of that, which is just another, you know, very exciting for me personally, way to participate in the community. And it's not that difficult because it's so well put together. So I can't go on enough about that, but just thanking the school district. On that note, we meet with them coming up next week, so I'm uh, excited for that, looking forward to it. Then Milwaukee City's Dinner next month, looking forward to that as well. Um, and the Metro Mix are coming up. So we have a lot of exciting stuff and I'm looking forward to being a part of all of it. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Cook?
I really don't have much. Um, I think uh, I'm very excited to volunteer for the community festival. Um, Bounce House, Bounce House Buds, who's gonna take Bounce House? Dunk Tank? Yeah.
I like the bounce house too. It's just one kid at a time.
So very excited for that. Um, I think I do appreciate, uh, I will echo um, what Bryce was saying earlier. About uh, the city's approach with the event grants. So um, I think it really has opened up um, opportunity that I think was there before. But I think made it very clear that, hey, the city is willing to support new ideas and new um, opportunity. Um, I've been hearing from a lot of different people who have like, you know, hearing that these event grants are available. They're really sparking some really interesting conversations about um, what's possible in our community. So I think that's really exciting. Especially the art fair. Very, very excited about that. I, because we've never had that before, so I'm very excited to see what that looks like. Um, but that's really it for me.
Counselor Alexander?
Okay, so um, at the community center, Officer Gilliam came and gave a talk on um, fraud and scams. And it was great. There was a lot of, there's thirty-five plus people there. And I, I learned stuff. I thought I knew quite, you know, he, he was telling a lot of things to watch out for, you know, like, if you have a little glass door in your garage. They punch those out and they got sticks that they just pull down that red thing on your automatic garage dropper. And then if you leave your house door unlocked, I mean, just he went on and on about all the scam, they knock on your door and say your tires. So there were so many questions. It was so entertaining and, and you know, informational, it was great. So shout out to him. Um, the community center, if you go to page six twenty-nine, you can see all the stuff they do, that half the whole page, you know, they're doing great things too. And then um, Seventh Day Adventists, those, the middle school that went down to Cross Park and replaced that, you know, the wooden retaining wall. That's just outstanding. We just got so much good stuff going on here. That, that's all I wanna say is let them people know. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Huckabee?
Thank you. Um, Counselor Garlington, I will say that during our fall conference, the mental health um. Workshop put on by Dr. Mike Franz with uh, Regions Blue Cross Blue Shield was also one of my favorite. Um, so it's nice to know that you um, participated in one in Clamath Falls and they are at times life-altering and you learn so much. You really, really do. Um, I am also excited for um, you, you say navigators and I'm assuming you mean the behavioral health addiction specialist. I'm so ready for that to move forward in this community. Um, we need it. I'm not gonna go into details, but we need it here.
Yeah.
Let's see, I don't have a whole lot. Next month is June, um, which is Pride Month. And one thing I love about Oregon and Clackamas County is we love to spread pride celebrations from June until September. So I'm hoping to go as to many of those as I possibly can. Um, and I hope you guys all will also. That's about it.
Thank you. Uh, I, I still subscribe to the Oregonian. Costs about sixteen dollars a week. You pay it monthly. And so I read a lot about what's going on across the state. I know that the OLCC is in the news again. You know, because a decision was made on the ethics of the people involved in making sure that their rich friends could get the most expensive whiskey. Uh, and, and, and it reminded me, uh, ethics of, of uh, state and city officials and national people. Were in the news last year around this time. And I, at this meeting, our first meeting in May, I asked everybody in the city council to verbally share. The contents of their uh, uh, statement of economic interest that we're all required to uh, to file. And. I'm not gonna ask anybody to do that this year, but I will proudly report that all seven of the city councilors. All seven of our planning commissioners, our city administrator, our municipal judge. And though they're not city-connected, all seven of our uh, district school board members. And the school district superintendent and Rachel Hopper, the financial person. All timely filed their statements of economic interest. And those are public documents that people can go online and look at. But um, we try to be conscious of not uh, having conflicts of interest in the word, in the decisions that we make and the work that we do. Or even the appearance of a conflict. And I'm grateful that we've uh, you know, we've gotten that message. And uh, because you sound like, you, you know, you think, well, it's a requirement, you have to do it, so everybody does it. Well, I've been reading articles about school board members in some counties in Oregon who resigned their position rather than reveal the source of where they got their income. So uh, there are, there are places where people look at those issues differently than we do. And it's one more reason why I'm glad uh, that I'm in Gladstone. And glad why we always have uh, our city attorney and others uh, guide us on, on all those ethical issues. When we start each year, uh, it's good to, you know, to be uh, to start off on the right foot and to do things the proper way. I also got uh, 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 my start with the city uh, with the school board by being on the budget committee. So uh, Counsel Roberts, I appreciate you uh, doing that service. And as well as I appreciate the citizens of our committee, who, uh, of our city who work on our budget committee. I, I spend a lot of time in our public schools. Last week was uh, still school, teachers and staff appreciation week. And there were a lot of people in the community involved in being very supportive and positive and creating a very positive environment in our schools. Uh, to remind us of, of how important our teachers are. And at times, things happen in a community where um. We're reminded of, of how fragile relationships are too. And uh, this is a week we need to um, you know, hug our kids, hug our grandchildren. Uh, be grateful for the relationships that we have and, and the supportive community that we have. Uh, a lot of that support comes from the families who've known each other through their school relationships. And um, I'm glad to live in a place where uh, we, we provide that kind of strength. And uh, support at times of need and uh. Uh, I'm glad we're a community that cares. So I think that's all I have for tonight. Greg, you still have your light on? Was there something else? Okay, all right, just wanted to check.
I was gonna make that motion and we're done.
Oh, all right, yeah, let's do that. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll accept that motion. Um, all right, so go ahead.
I make a motion. This convened. I make a motion. This convened.
Second.
All right. Counsel Alexander moved. Counsel Robert seconded that we, uh, adjourn. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Robert?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milk?
Yes, our meeting is adjourned at, uh, eight twenty-four.